Call the Election Commission meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Felder?
Here.
Germani?
Here.
Egguangeli?
Lomore?
Present.
Fining?
Whitman?
Here.
Thank you. There's four items for Commission action. Clerk Treasure, your vote.
The first item is the resolution delegating certain duties to the clerk treasurer. Those haven't changed since any of the other election commission meetings.
So the ones that we've acted on before. So you need a motion just to accept the resolution?
Yes, and a vote.
Okay. And we have that here.
Essentially, they're just the regular duties that I as clerk have to carry out to conduct the elections. The Election Commission must approve that.
If there's any questions from the Commission. If not, then we need a motion, a second, to accept the resolution.
Your Honor, I would motion that we resolve to delegate certain duties clerk treasurer has stated.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Felder, supported by Commissioner Lomore. And this one, we do need a roll call, vote on. The others, we can pass in collective. So clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Felder?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, next item.
The next item is the establishment of the report time and location for the absent voter counting board. That will be Election Day, November 6th, and we will conduct the counting board in the former Social Security office on the third floor at City Hall, beginning at 11:00 a.m. So I just need approval of that.
If there's any questions on the date and time, location, seeing none, they need a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I pose a motion to accept the absent voter counting board to establish report time and location.
As stated.
As stated, yes.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Morris, supported by Commissioner Whitman, on the absent voter counting board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Clerk, next item.
The next item is the public accuracy test date and participants. That's a meeting of the Election Commission, so we will need a quorum. We would like to schedule it for Tuesday, October 30th, at 10:00 a.m., although, as we have done in the past, we are flexible on the time if we need to be, and that would be... Right now, we're going to establish it at the clerk's office.
Okay.
Because I don't know the status of the chambers at that point.
I know I am available, so I would be one. We're looking in across Lomore. Is it yes?
Okay.
And Commissioner Germani?
I can help.
And Commissioner Whitman. And we have two that aren't here, but at this time, we may be able to voice in, just in case we always need that extra one sometimes, in case there's something comes up.
And we will be having one more brief Election Commission meeting prior to the next council meeting, so they can be added to that list if we need to.
So this was about the date and time and location. I think that we've established that, and I think appears that we'd have a quorum. So a motion to accept the testing date and participants, as stated.
Make a motion that we accept the date and times and participants, as stated?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Whitman, supported by Commissioner Germani. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And one final item.
The final item is the approval of the election inspectors. So I've given you a list. It is the election inspectors and their party. It is not divided up yet by precincts, because as generally happens prior to the election, that can be a little fluid. So at least we can approve the list, and we can be in assigning them to the precincts. So I just need a motion to approve the election inspector list.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Motion that we approve the election inspectors list as stated on the sheet.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morris, supported by Commissioner Germani, to accept the approval of the election inspectors. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very well. Any comments, clerk for adjournment?
I have no comments.
Any comments from the Commissioners?
Nope.
And any comments from those present here this evening on the Election Commission? Seeing none? Just motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Support.
A motion and a second, or support? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're done. So next is our council work session. Mr. Pastor, it's on your agenda, right? Clerk? Okay. So at this time, I'll open the city council work session to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germani?
Here.
Lomore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Egguangeli?
Here.
Fining? Mayor Clark?
Here.
So I know that, Mr. Pastor, you have a few items that you shared with us, and I think we'll just get right to them.
Thank you, Your Honor. First item is presentation with Mark Cochran and... Why am I drawing a blank all of a sudden?
Florence Buchanan.
Florence Buchanan, that did work together on the citizen survey. Mark and Florence have looked through the results of this. A lot of data, a lot of detail, and I think Mark's going to hit the highlights, so. Mark?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Council, we're here tonight to present the results of the National Citizen Survey that we initiated earlier this year. Florence and I are going to give a very broad, high-level review of the data. I can tell you that the information that we got back from NCS was very comprehensive, and you'll see the full report. But given the fact that we're going to spend about 25 minutes throwing a whole bunch of percentages at you, I think we tried to make this about as enlightening and engaging as we possibly can. So first, I wanted to start... There we go. With the reason why we went with NCS and why we initiated doing a citizen survey this year. You accept the council goals and objectives earlier this year, and part of that was a council to promote community... A goal to promote community engagement programs, but also to provide fiscal responsibility while maintaining quality of life, and doing that through enhanced service and customer experience improvement. So this really goes back to tying in the voice of the resident and the voice of the citizen, and a wide variety of topics and subjects that we'll get into in a little bit. But I wanted to hand it off to Florence next to first introduce herself and her work that she's been doing with the city, but also give some background again on why we chose NCS and also the survey validity process.
Okay, good evening to Mayor, Council, and elected officials. And let me just take a minute to introduce myself, because when you say Florence Buchanan, I do know a lot of the elected officials, but not all. So I have lived in the city of Monroe for the last 28 years. I moved here in 1990 to assume the responsibilities of general manager of Monroe Cable. Does anybody remember Monroe Cable?
Mm-hmm.
And we were located in the Vantage Building. John was a property manager, and I had those responsibilities up until 2002, when it was sold to Comcast by the parent company, Law Communications, who also owns the Toledo Blade, and also Buckeye Cable. But I bought my home here in the city, and I didn't want to move back to Toledo, so for 14 years, I commuted. And in 2016, January, I left the industry, left Buckeye, and shortly after that, I started my consulting business in customer experience management. And I'm pleased to say that this past spring, I had the opportunity to actually train about 80 city employees on customer service and customer experience strategies. And it went very well, and we're hoping possibly in the future to continue some of that training. And I also had an opportunity to sit in with Project Innovations, the previous consultant, on some of the focus groups with some of the HBA members and also some of the residents, building owners of the community. So with that said, that's who I am. So let's get started. Okay, so... Oh, I'm sorry, how do I go back there? Okay, so why did we choose the National Citizen Survey? The National Citizen Survey is a product of the National Research Center. And we actually considered using a local company, but once I investigated that further, the National Research Center was much more cost-effective. And one of the major reasons why we went with them is because they could benchmark us against 500 communities nationally that they have actually done surveys for across the country, whereas a local company could not do that. So the cost was much more cost-effective. They were able to mail the surveys much more cost-effective than a local company. And I know that benchmarking was very, very important to Mark and to Vince, so that was one of the reasons why we actually went with them. And also, they have such a great reputation in the public sector, nonprofits, et cetera. So we chose the National Research Center. Okay. So how is the survey administered? The survey was actually mailed by random selection of 2,500 randomly selected households by precinct. And it was actually mailed three notifications. The initial notification said, "The survey is coming." The second was actually the survey itself, and the third was a reminder if they had not responded from the household. So there were 132 questions, which was a standard survey. We actually had the opportunity to include four custom surveys based upon the strategies and the future plans that Mark and Vince had agreed upon. So the benchmark included the 132 standards, and then we were able to get a benchmark against the four customized questions if our peer communities actually asked a very live question. And you'll see that information when you get a copy of your survey. So those four questions were strategic planning focus, operation priorities, customer service experience with the city departments, and the preference for how the citizens actually communicate with the city of Monroe. So also, there was an opportunity to opt-in for those residents or citizens who were not randomly selected. They had the availability, which they saw through social media, to actually go onto the city's website and take the survey. So what were the results? Okay. So actually, 3% of the 2,500 surveys, 3% were returned from the post office because were not locatable, bad addresses, et cetera. I don't know how that compares with maybe other mass mailings that the city does, but 3% was a number that was actually returned. Of the remaining 2,417, 576 respondents were received, with a response rate of 24%. Now, that was our target goal, because a representative from NCR actually stated that based upon community size, we could expect to get a 24% response, and we did achieve that, so that was great. Okay, so of the 576 completed, 57 residents completed online. So the randomly selected households had the option of actually filling out, completing via the paper survey, and mailing it back in. Or in that letter, that communication, there was included a custom URL that they could go to their computer and just paste it into their browser and take the survey electronically versus mailing it in. So you had 57 residents who actually did that. And then the other 486 respondents were actually the people who saw them on social media or maybe just happened to be on the city's website and took the survey. So we had a grand total of 1,063 respondents. Now, in that 24%, only the 576 mailed respondents are included in that 24%. The National Citizens... The National Research Center advised us that we could combine those results, both the mailed in and the opt-in via the social media website, because the respondents were mirroring the online respondents who were just randomly saw it on Facebook or wherever they saw it on social media. Those respondents were mirroring what the randomly selected were, so they advised us that we could combine those results, but they are not in the 24%, so I'm clarifying that for you guys. Okay. So this is a look by precinct, how the precincts responded. So one thing about choosing the National Research Center, we were able to identify by precinct. And I will say, as far as the survey, whether it be paper or online, the respondents were asked to identify... There was a map, a map of the city. They were asked to identify which precinct they lived in. So that gave us the ability to actually have the information, the data segmented by precinct. So you can see, the highest respondent precinct was number four, which is right here. And we took the... So if you take precinct three, we divide that between north and south. Combine, it was 29%. And then you had five at 29, precinct six at 23, and then one and two at 20. So once you get a copy of your report, you'll be able to go in there by precinct, each council person, and see question by question how your precinct residents actually responded. So that'll be good data for you as well. So then, let's talk about survey validity, because I'm sure you may be asking yourself, "We have roughly 23,000 residents in the city, 22,000, 20,000." So how confident are we that this survey is actually valid? And this information is included in your report, so you can actually read more up on this, get your actual report. So there's two issues here. One is, how confident are you that the respondents, the 576 plus the ones who responded online, are reflective of the responses that could have happened if we had surveyed the entire community? That's the first issue. And the second is, how closely do those respondents reflect what people really think and do? Because you are just getting a random sample, okay? But based upon best practices for research, science, the NCR has given us at least eight different reasons why proven statistics, scientific statistics, why this survey is valid. So let's talk about them. I'm not going to read everything up here, I'm just going to highlight some of the key points. One, using a mail-in, mail-back, because mail-in surveys, paper surveys, have a higher response rate than telephone. Okay. I guess that's why the census is mailed, we have to assume. Selecting households at random, so you're actually looking at a random sample of the entire community, okay? Oversampling multifamily housing, because typically, in most communities, you have possibly millennials who are younger, and you have possibly lower-income residents who are living in apartments. So they oversample the multi-dwelling units. And then selecting the respondents within the household. So they told the... In the communication letter, they told the residents to make sure the person who is 18 years or older with the most current birthday, regardless of the year. And then the next four are contacting potential residents, respondents three times. As I mentioned before, the initial, "The survey is coming," the actual survey itself, and actually the reminder survey. And then inviting responses in a compelling manner. So all the correspondence were sent out on city stationery with city locals. So everybody knew that this was coming from a leader, and Vince signed the documents. So everybody knew that this was directly coming from the city of Monroe, city manager. And then providing pre-addressed envelopes, didn't have to worry about finding a stamp to put it on it or getting it in the post office. And then weighing the results against and reflecting the entire community. So these valid... The validity of the survey is actually based upon proven statistics, scientific research, that we could be assured that the survey is valid. So back to Mark.
So the core ten of the National Citizen Survey is that they look at a combination of the three pillars of quality of life in the community, and that's the community characteristics, the governance in the community, and then citizen participation in their community. And then underneath... I don't know if it works for you, Florence, but not me.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there it goes. And then underneath that... Underneath each of the pillars, they measure the eight central facets that you see above. So the first part of the survey measured community characteristics, and then it asked about the eight facets: governance, participation, and so on and so forth. And you'll be able to see when you get your survey what all the questions were and how they fell under each category. So what is the overall quality of life in the city according to our residents? 45% of city of Monroe residents gave a positive response, that we have a good quality of life in Monroe. And I want to remind you that these are baseline numbers. So while some of the numbers may seem great, some of them may seem not so great. This is baseline data for us to measure in the years to come, to measure whether we're improving upon our initiatives and citizen responses. So 45% positive response rate for the quality of life was much lower than our national comparison communities and lower than our other peer communities. So I'll get into in a minute how they measured our peer communities, but you'll see the rank. We ranked 462 out of 481 national. Those are out of the 500 communities that they've done a survey in, they asked these questions. So same with our peer communities, there were 11 other communities in our peer group that asked this question, and we ranked 10th. So how did Monroe stack up nationally? In each of the main facets, you'll see that we were similar to the national benchmark in five of the eight, and then in three of the eight, our built environment, recreation, and wellness, and economy, we were lower than the national benchmark. In our peer communities, it was almost the same, except we were similar to our pure benchmark peer communities and under built environment. So we were able to select... We didn't want to be compared against the 500 communities in our country only, because some of them had residents of 1 million or more. Some of them had annual median incomes of $500,000. We didn't think it was fair for us, so we hand-selected about 29 other communities that were in the north-central region, similar to us, who had a population of 10,000 to 40,000, and a median income of 35,000 to 55,000. So as we go through the survey, and you see the comparison against our peer benchmarks, that's who we're comparing ourselves against in addition to the national. So we asked about the strategic planning areas in each of the eight facets, and what residents felt like were the top priorities. So there's the eight, as well as the percentage next to it, and what stands out is economy is number one, and safety is number two. So 92% of residents think that it's very important for the city to focus on the economy, and 90% feel it's important to focus on the safety. So these were topic areas that we asked about that had a positive response rate of 25% or less. There were the overall quality of new development in the city, overall economic health of the community, a vibrant downtown and commercial area had a positive response of 25% or less, shopping opportunities, and employment opportunities. And then I'll hand it over to Florence. She's going to go through each of the facets and what the highlights, the top five and the low five, were in each category.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So I'm going to review a little deeper dive on the three pillars: community characteristics, governance, and participation. So I want to start with... I'm hearing it. I'm going to start with community characteristics. You can see, this is just a pie chart on the characteristics. 46% good, 39% fair, 7% excellent, and 8% poor. It's going to make much more sense once we get here. So I took a look at the five top ratings under the community characteristics, and safe downtown and safe in the neighborhood rated very well. And I can attest to that, because in the summer, I oftentimes walk downtown just to get some evening supplies, and I feel 100% safe, so that's a good benchmark there. Overall ease of travel by bicycle. I think we all agree, we see a lot of bicyclists in this community, which is a good thing. And overall ease by bicycle and by car. And then religious or spiritual activities that rank very high as well. Ease of walking paths and walking trails, and overall natural environment and the air quality. These were the top five ratings in the community characteristics. There's always a high up, and there's always a down. So unfortunately, the downside is, the lower ratings were shopping opportunities, was rated one of the lowest. Vibrant downtown commercial area, employment opportunities, new development in Monroe, and mental health care. So that's how those rank. And you'll get much more information on all of these when you get a copy of the survey results. The next pillar was governance. And this is a pie chart with over... Let's see, 55% ranking good to excellent, and then 36% fair, and 9% poor. And the top five ratings are fire, which we would expect, public libraries rated very well, garbage collection, recycling, and yard waste, ambulance, EMS, police, city parks, and sewer services tied for gift places on the top five ratings there. And the lowest five ratings were street repair, did not fare very well, economic development, land use, planning and zoning, code enforcement, recreation centers, and health centers. And now we have... This is just basically resident participation and activities throughout the community. So we have, let's see, fair was 43%, and poor 23%, excellent 5%, and poor was 29. And the details on that are... This reflects the Monroe community, talk to or visit the neighbors, hometown atmosphere, purchase goods or services in Monroe, recycling in home. I think the recycling has increased since we had the change with the vessels, but I know I've done one more. And was not a victim of crime, voted in local elections, visited a city park, and participated in activity done in neighborhoods. The lower ratings was use public transportation instead of driving. Now, these are lower ratings. So possibly people who need public transportation, maybe bicycling possibly more or walking than using public transportation. Attended a local public meeting, contacted Monroe elected officials. You guys may or may not, you know, be happy with that. Attended or watched a local public meeting. And this was interesting, stockpile supplies for an emergency. And economy will have a positive impact on Monroe. Those are lower ratings. So, back to Mark.
So those were the standard questions that were asked in all across the country and according to our peer communities, but Florence mentioned that we had the opportunity to insert some custom questions as well, based on strategic initiatives that the city was taking a look at or proposing, to see what the citizen feedback was on that. So the first question, the survey asked about how residents felt during... In the downtown during the day. Comparison and contrast, that we wanted to know at night how residents felt. So about 60% positive. So 89% I think felt safe in the downtown during the day. About 60% felt positive... Or felt somewhat or very safe in downtown in the evening. The other question that we asked was, rate the quality of internet services in the city. We've been having a lot of discussions with local businesses and stakeholders about internet quality in Monroe, and can this be an attractor for business development in residence? We needed to look at internet as being just as important of infrastructure as roads and water and sewers. So this was one of the questions we wanted to ask, to look at how our providers in our community providing services to our residents and how they feel about it. Generally, it was pretty positive, 72% positive on internet service in the community. And then we asked about eight strategic priority areas that we've been looking at, and how residents feel they are in importance to the future of the city over the next two years. Street surface improvements obviously ranked number one. I think you could ask that question all across the state, and that would probably float to the top. We asked about redeveloping downtown. Access to recreation on the river ranked number three. The farmer's market, how important is historic preservation of buildings and neighborhoods? Public art, 15% thought that it was very important. You'll remember that was one of the council goals and objectives that we talked about this year, too, and possibly restarting the local arts commission. The River Rays and National Battlefield was about 43% positive. Now, it was interesting, one of the things that was noted in the survey results without us prompting NCS was, they said residents of Monroe are pretty pessimistic about the local economy and the local outlook on the economy. So it was surprising that only 43% said that the national park was a positive, because that can be a good tourism driver for the economy. And I think I quote that word for word out of the survey. And then, of course, the dog park, something I think we've all been working on and trying to find a solution for somewhere in the city. 17% thought that that was essential, and it really fell to the bottom of the list compared to surface street improvements and downtown redevelopment. So then, four other initiatives that we asked about. Curbside leaf collection, 42% thought that that was a top priority. Increased online self-citizen... Online service for self-service on the website ranked about the same as curbside leaf collection. And then enhancing city-to-resident communications. And then this one I thought was interesting, too, because we asked about what are sources of information where residents turn to to get information about... of, uh, information where residents turn to to get information about the city. Uh, the city website topped and then followed by local media outlets, the newspaper, radio, um, city communication via social media, word of mouth, talking with elected officials. We know that ranked kind of low based on what, uh, Florence just presented as that being in one of the lower five in participation. City council meetings and other public meetings and then, um, the impact in the government access channel. This survey was done after we launched our app. So in the future, we should include the, the mobile app as being a source of information to gauge whether citizens are using it or not. But I, I'd really like to see the city website at the top of list being the top source of information for city residents. I think that shows that the investment in the new, uh, website was well worth it because over half of city residents view that as the, the, uh, most important source for information. And then I'll hand this, uh, slide over to Florence because it talks about customer experience at city hall and customer interaction, uh, with city departments.
For a comment on this slide, I like to say that as part of being a resident at City Monroe, I have to say the website has, has expanded leaps and bounds and it's phenomenal now what you can do on the website, the city's website. Cause I've had to research other websites, uh, you know, cities and communities in the county. And, uh, I just discovered something like paying the city taxes. I know you could do that, Michelle, but I think it's just a matter of getting the word out to the community at large that the city's website now has been upgraded. Jody and whoever helped assist her has done a phenomenal job to website. So there's so much more that you can do self-serve on the city's website now. It is, it is phenomenal. Just wanted to say that. Um, anyway, let's talk about, um, this particular rating. So let me just go back to the customer experience, uh, training we had with the city employees back in the spring. The, as part of that training, we actually did a, uh, personality profile on all 80 employees. And the supervisors of each one of these departments, uh, did a separate survey, just with training, just with the supervisors. And then they were giving personality profiles for their, for their team, for their staffs. And Vince also received a comprehensive report of all the personally, personality profiles of everyone who took the survey itself. But by having the managers and the supervisors at that level, having the profiles for their employees, that gives them the opportunity to better manage and understand, uh, their direct teams and their staffs. So with the customer experience training, you can see that number one was the fire. We expect that. Armin are heroes. So we expect them to be at the top. And the EMS was next with, um, treasure and then water building department, so on and so on. But the building department falls at the bottom, but we know there's been a lot of extensive work in the last 18 months to two years on getting the reputation of the building department to improve. And I think we have made a lot of progress. Um, as far as the training, there were a lot of, uh, feedback from the employees, from all the teams and all the staffs about, um, customer experience. Getting to understand that the residents and the citizens, whether it be a resident, whether it be a builder or contractor, that they are customers of the city of Monroe. And a lot of the training was focused on that particular issue, getting the employees to understand. A lot of employees do get that part of it, but having an overall comprehensive view of what customer service is and what customer experience is was really a focus of the training. So you can see here how the, uh, citizens, uh, rated the each individual departments, um, from excellent to poor. But the building department, um, is making progress. Would you agree with that, Mark? Yeah. Yeah. And, uh, so you can take a, a better look at this and you get the report, but I think this is a very telling, uh, survey. And hopefully we do additional training, some of these numbers will actually move, uh, improve particularly with building. Okay.
Thanks. So in conclusion, throwing a lot at you already, but I'm going to throw some more at you. How do residents feel about the city of Monroe? Over half think it's a good place to live, 53%. 56% would recommend Monroe to others to live. 45% think that it's a good quality of life in the city. 53% have an overall positive feeling of safety in the city. 44% think it's a good place to raise children. 26% have a positive image of our community. I think that's pretty sad, but I think what, uh, what Florence has alluded to, I think we can use this as a tool to do more directed communication. I think some of the, the things that the city has done and the resources that we've improved upon, I think looking at what residents are using as communication tools, we can reach out and say, hey, did you know in precinct four, we're doing this? In precinct three, we're doing this and, and try and get some more targeted communication and hopefully see these numbers move over the next, uh, couple of times we do the survey. So what we read in the survey is that the economy is a top priority. 92% think it's a top priority over the next two years. There were two areas in the city that we ranked higher than the national average out of all the questions that we asked. The first was, um, 80% of Monroe residents are not under housing stress. That's good. That means that we have a good quality of life here or a good cost of living. You flip and you look at the cost of living question and a lot of people think, uh, that it's expensive and that we have a high cost of living. National citizens survey pointed out that that question is always that same answer in every community. Everybody thinks that they have a high cost of living in their community. So the top priorities over the next two years, 92% think it's the economic health, followed by safety, street surface improvements and downtown redevelopment. Improving our quality of life. What ranked very high in terms of priority over the next two years to improve the quality of life is to continue to increase access to recreation on the river. Continue to improve the farmer's market and work with the farmer's market. The other area that we ranked higher than our national, uh, peers, and I think this is something that we can be very proud of, is that Monroe residents were more likely to engage in active travel. That's walking, that's biking and using alternative modes of transportation. We were higher than our national and our peer companion communities. Just 13% gave positive remarks for shopping opportunities in the city. Now, uh, when the letter went out and when the survey went out, it did say, please only rank the city of Monroe. Some people may not know where all the city limits are. Um, they're pretty wonky at times, we know, but we were asking people just to judge the city and not the overall, uh, area. And then our city parks received high marks by two thirds of our residents, which were similar to our national and peer community benchmarks. Our residents feel safe. 86% think, uh, they feel safe in their own neighborhood. 87% feel safe in downtown and 60% at night. Um, residents are more likely to contact police and fire than any other department, but only half give a, a feeling of overall safety in the entire community. Therefore, therefore 90% think that this is an important issue to focus on over the next two years being safety. So what do we do with this now? Um, we've got the results. You're going to receive a packet tonight that breaks down everything we asked, what the responses were for every question, how we ranked against our national peers, how we ranked against our, uh, community peers, and then also how it breaks down by precinct. So you can look at your precinct and see how residents feel about, um, mental health in, in your precinct and every other question that we asked about. So mayor and council, you're going to get a report tonight. Uh, department heads will receive access to the full, uh, survey as well. And then we'll also distribute it to our media partners. And then it'll also be posted on the city website tomorrow. I know Jody already has it queued up. Recommend doing an action plan. So looking at the citizen survey and all the responses that we got back, what are we doing well and how do we strengthen those things to make sure that we keep our ratings high in those areas? What are we not doing so well at? And what do we need to do to get those, uh, those ratings up? One of the important things when we looked at our peer communities, we wanted the names and we wanted contact numbers. If one of them is doing higher in an area, can we call them up and, and ask for suggestions on what they're doing and how their ratings are so high? Um, but also use it as a tool when council is setting their goals and objectives every two years. When we're looking at resources, what are the citizens telling us we, that they want the priority to be? And then finally, don't let this just sit on the shelf for the next two years, but repeat it. Uh, see if we're moving the needle in, in all of our initiatives and the strategies that we're working on to see if we're seeing these numbers come up to hopefully see that more than 25% of Monroe residents have a positive viewpoint of their community. So with that, we'll open it up to questions.
So I know we'll receive the reports, which is great and have some time to really get in some of the details for each of us, but to see if there's any questions right off the start from the council. All that information, I look forward to reading the report. Now, the residents will as well. Any comments?
Uh, first off, I would like to tell, compliment you, Mark and Florence. That was probably one of the nicer slide presentations I've seen in a long time. I know that trying to analyze surveys like this are difficult. You made it very simple and you hit a lot of the high marks and I appreciate the amount of work you put into it. I guess from a council's point of view, I, that those, those last couple of slides were very telling about quality of life, people's perceptions. 23% of people are positive about Monroe, 44% say it's a great place to raise a family. Those are, those are key indicators that we have to improve on. I, uh, hopefully when we dig into this, we can, we can figure out exactly some of those issues. Um, I think from a council perspective, it would be interesting to take a look at the responses and then factor those or overlay those against our council goals and strategies to see which ones we really need to focus on. Based on what, what you, the summary to this evening, it seems like people are really focused on downtown redevelopment as a core area and streets. So from a council point of view, maybe those are strategies or those are actions that we really need to focus attention on. How do we improve the streets and how to accelerate redevelopment of the downtown? So people have a more positive outlook on the community two years from now when we do the, uh, we do, we do the survey again. But, uh, yeah, I'm really interested to take a look at what the results are. I think it's, uh, um, actually, uh, it's money well spent. It's very eye-opening and we can use it definitely to craft our budgets and our strategy. Your honor, thanks.
Thanks. You know, as we, uh, get through this year, of course, uh, we set our goals and objectives for two years for this council. And, uh, I know, I'm pretty sure that, uh, the city manager and staff will be reviewing kind of, uh, their assessment of that and as council will should, we should do as well. I think, uh, genuine points we'll take in it. As we look at these and as we get to the next, uh, year plus, while there's many things you want to achieve everything, how do you pinpoint focus on those that are going to be the impactful, but also, uh, impactful in sense of the residents as was stated. It was interesting as you went through the thumbs up and the thumbs down on a couple of them. And as, uh, we saw that, uh, kind of that thought on the economic side. And then one slide as you went through the first four, really were all economics. They were specific to what they were saying, but you could, that's economics, downtown, uh, retail economics. And how you go through this employment. And there's another one that had very similar responses. I look at this. So I, I'd really like to get down and we have in front of you and kind of go through and just kind of check off if it's what you did or didn't see. I look forward to reading as well. Nice presentation. Thank you.
Thanks for the compliment. And in all due respect, that's why you didn't get a copy before today's presentation or because we did not want to be bombarded by questions? We're not there yet in understanding the data. Just very high level.
Yeah, I think this was a great approach to just to, this is what you see. And then opportunities not only for the council, but those residents and they, as they saw us on the website and accessibility, they might have follow-up questions. Well, I said this, but I thought it meant that. You know, it might be, well, there's something more I think about. Maybe they didn't fill it out, but now they want to give their kind of two cents in that, which is great too. So I hope there's other, uh, comments from council. Very well.
I might just add a little bit, uh, you know, again, nice job with Mark and Florence in, in working through this whole, uh, project to this point. Uh, I was kind of struck by how, you know, a lot of the city council's goals and objectives identified earlier this year do pertain to many of the issues that were identified, uh, in the, the survey itself. Uh, I was kind of hoping tonight, uh, if time permitted, uh, we could review where we are, you know, so far with those goals and objectives. And, um, but I do think that a lot of them we've clicked off and, and bring those back to council. And, and we may contemplate, uh, you know, maybe having a, uh, an amendment to that update maybe in January like we did this year to, you know, take this, uh, survey information, evaluate what, uh, what's been accomplished and how do we maybe refocus some of those efforts to address what was identified in the survey. So, but that's a great job, I think, very helpful information. And, and hopefully we do move the needle as, uh, the next, uh, survey goes, instrument goes out, uh, so.
Can I just say one last thing? I just wanted to give kudos to the National Research Center. They were very easy to work with. And I said the exact same thing that John said. It was money very well spent. Cause there's a lot of research information, data that you want to have, I think be very useful.
Mark was a pleasure to work with as well.
Can we get, can we get a PDF of that?
It's going to be on the website too.
Okay, will be. Okay, good. Your honor, the next slide of this is in our ongoing discussion with, uh, different boards and committees. Uh, I, uh, have tonight, uh, the Monroe Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I did provide, uh, um, a copy of the, uh, ordinance, uh, chapter 22, article, uh, four dealing with, uh, the composition of the committee and its purpose and functions. And I put that out for, uh, you know, for point of reference with that and, and particularly in light of what we talked about, uh, with, uh, Citizens Planning Commission, uh, last meeting. Uh, you know, from, if I may just, uh, start some of the conversation, uh, it has not been active, uh, the last few years. Uh, and in many ways, I think a lot of, uh, you know, where I'm comfortable is certainly working with, uh, the director, uh, Loretta O'Point, uh, going over different policies and procedures and programs and, and bringing those to city council, uh, which in, based on the, uh, ordinance was a part of the function of the Parks and Rec Commission. And we've done a, a couple of projects, uh, with, uh, park plans and now most recently with Labor Park and, and even the, uh, Parks and Rec master plan update. But it's kind of functioned in some ways more on an ad hoc, uh, committee basis. Something which I'm comfortable, but I do think there is engagement. Uh, and, uh, but I think going long-term, if, uh, if it's not as active as it has been, it certainly probably puts a greater, uh, I think, um, burden and, and so from an education standpoint with Citizens Planning Commission and their review of some of the, the different, uh, rec plans and different, uh, trails and those type of design related. So.
Thank you. That's, uh, over to you, city manager. Just some thoughts on, uh, and maybe where we are with the Recreation Advisor Commission, any thoughts of the future? I know that one of the items we talked about is looking at how do we move forward and some of the things that came out within the survey, but it's things we talked about. Is that arts and culture aspect? Is it recreation, arts and culture? Is it library, arts and culture? I think those are the long-term conversations we're going to have. But where that best fits as review, uh, our boards and commissions and some of the adjustments we've done on some, uh, already, but, uh, the future as well. So any comments for Vince at this time on, on, uh, this area? Of course, time to review the, again, the, uh, chapter on how it's currently structured. Is it something we should be revising, you know, for the future?
Your honor, uh, I've been the liaison to Parks and Rec Commission for a few years. And, uh, I, I think the, the group needs to be, the commission needs to be totally revamped and reorganized. Uh, when it started, when the city of Monroe took over Parks and Rec, because years ago it was the city and the schools ran the parks program. The city took it over primarily to be more aggressive on the development of parks. And it was a Parks and Recreation Commission. And they got involved in the master planning of parks, the programming. They obviously advocated for funding. And then over a period of years, the Parks and Rec Commission turned out to be more of an appeals board, kind of like ultimately refereeing softball decisions and problems that parents had with the little league coach. Uh, and attendance is up and down and it fluctuates. And just, you know, without really, I haven't reviewed in detail the survey results, but this is the quick snapshot we were provided tonight where people really look at Parks and Recreation as a key component of the community. Maybe there's an opportunity here to reorganize Parks and Recreation to make it more of a multi-organizational group that has representation from the environment, committee on the environment. It has representation from the planning commission, from the culture and arts program and make it more of a multi-disciplinary, uh, committee and commission that really takes a look holistically at Parks and Recreation and just not the programming aspect of it. And really kind of give it the power that it needs to be a more aggressive. So that's kind of what my suggestion is that we should be taking a look at. We shouldn't get rid of it. I think we need to reorganize it and, and, and come up with a new mission for it. That's more in line with our strategy and what, what the community's expectations are. I mean, we're a biking community. We should have people on the Parks Commission that are bike advocate, you know, like, you know, like from Jack, from Jack's, Jack's bicycle. People like that that are, you know, that can provide that level of detail. So I think we need to think of it differently.
I guess I'll follow up with that. And then thinking over the years of having been associated with Parks and Rec. with Parks and Recreation and just as you said, John, you look at it and even in the, in one of the functions and duties, it says about resolute and disciplinary rulings related to non-compliance and they, exactly, they were, they were brought into disputes on a ball field, into an arena of a meeting. It really got off track and that's not a negative comment to those that spent their time and efforts on the Recreation Commission because I think they were beneficial. We started reviewing those Parks Master Plans. There's opportunities for their input, but I think it can be broader as well. There's bicycle or cyclist groups in our community and in the county as well and they are always looking to get engaged. I think that the expansion is the opportunity. It served well, is where we got to where we are, but I think just much more we can do that's related to not just the survey, but our goals and objectives, things we've done over the last few years and related to parks and really give them that involvement. Having other members of some of our other committees involved, we've talked about that in another Board of Commission of how we kind of cross-reference that citizen engagement, that volunteer. You know, as you look at, we'll talk about this as we get into our boards and commissions and assignments and reappointments, you know, five of the seven members, five of the seven current members actually have an expired term and there's kind of a reason for that. Really was trying to, we had to, I think, figure out what it is we want before we start reappointing or looking at those members and I think they, as I said, they've served well. I think they're also ready to move on in some respects and hopefully we can retain a couple and move on with some additional boards. I agree not to eliminate an important part of volunteerism and activities, but really this is going to take some councils' opportunities to what is the composition of this commission. Other comments or questions on this? You can read over through the chapter there and really look through and say, geez, do we really do that? And the answer may be no and that's a good reason why we should start looking at what it is we want and what the residents want this to make up to be, so. Vince, I'll see if you have other comments on that?
No, just looking at, you know, how you might structure something that may have someone with the Commission on the Environment, CPC, you know, bicyclist, trail-related type of interest party.
National Park.
Yeah, yeah, National Park, yep. And maybe the DDA as well because of the riverfront and the open space, so.
Just a quick thought of that, as we move forward, because we talk about people that volunteer in one Board of Commission, another in that crossover, but also not, I'd be cautious of not wanting to isolate other opportunities so that in that Board of Commissioners, there's those that say, I really only want to serve on recreation and may not want to be that crossover person. I think that's good to balance that so we don't have two or three boards or commissions that seem to be the same people. And then you have a small number that starts to manage multiple crossover areas that then I think we'd, we'd be lessening opportunities, but also the input, which is valuable. So, how we do that, where we pick that, I think is part of that whole discussion.
Yeah, you've got a couple of people on the Recreation Commission right now that are, that have been on for a while that are really, really have a lot of institutional history. I mean, Karen Feldman is a good example. Karen's been involved in the tot lot programming. She's been a volunteer for parks. She really understands the Monroe Park system, so you don't want to lose.
That.
That part of it. So, you want to have some, you know, outside residents that are on the board and then maybe have some other committee in order to kind of energize it, re-energize it a little bit.
Very well. Do you know other comments? Vince, I hear a couple more items.
Our next item is, we want to talk with city council about the conversion of Cass and Harrison to two-way streets. I think we do have a presentation, Mr. Lewis would come to the podium, but part of it is, it was discussed at the Mayor's Traffic and Safety Committee last week and some of the survey results were presented and we, and a lot of the residents are along there, were not favorably inclined, although I think as part of changing the feel and the character and the dynamic nature of our downtown, that that was certainly one of the recommendations of the transportation consultants with that, which is, you know, in some ways, if I make the observation, I can see why this city of Monroe had a lot of one-way streets, given the number of employment facilities such as Ford and ETE on the east end of town, but it's a different day and a different dynamic and certainly one-way streets in the downtown have been certainly detrimental to having that vibrancy that we're seeking and our survey residents, survey respondents identified as well. So, we'll talk a little bit about it. I think, Patrick, there's a couple of areas where, you know, it chokes a little bit, but I think, you know, we can work our way through it and I'm certainly comfortable recommending the implementation. Timing may matter whether we do it this time of the year, maybe wait till spring. I'm open for discussion. Patrick?
First Honorable Mayor and Council, Patrick Kuo, Director of Engineering and Public Services. I just threw together this map. You can see we got the GIS tool and just kind of marked up some arrows on there indicating, I broadened the map to include the rest of the city too, but obviously the Traffic Committee was looking at Cass Street here. This is Eighth. This is the Kroger Shopping Center and then all the way to downtown. This is Front. Harrison going the other way, southbound from the corner, Front and First, all the way south to Eighth. Doesn't come through real clear, but the transition obviously at Eighth Street allows for two-way traffic into the Kroger Shopping Center and that's an issue we've talked about before. And Harrison Street continues beyond the city limits, so that's two-way south of Eighth. We've got the one-way pair of Seventh and Eighth also shown on here. That wasn't the topic of the Traffic Committee meeting, but very well could be as we move forward with the broader plan. And then, of course, the streets, Front and First Downtown that are one-way. Mr. Pastu alluded to the slight differences in the width of those streets and as we mentioned, that's part of the Traffic Committee item. And we did do resident surveys. We broke them out block by block, so each block of Cass, the 700 block, 600 block, 500, those are all delineated separately and the surveys returned and tabulated separately. The residents, it was a little heavier on the response rate south of Fourth Street in here and those are, I think they tend to be a little more owner-occupied homes and there's also a little greater density there, so that's why we had a little better, a little better response rate, I think. The streets, Cass Street's actually wider from Front Street down to Fourth because of Boyd School used to be there between Third and Fourth, so the street's actually 32 feet wide from Third to Fourth and 36 from Third Street North and it's actually 26 feet wide south of Fourth in here, so. So, this might be a little more challenging on Cass Street if that were to be converted two-way because of the, a couple of blocks have double-sided parking. Harrison Street is 36 feet from First to Third, narrows down to 26 on this block from Third to Fourth and then for some reason goes back to 28 for the remaining area going south to Eighth Street. So, most of the sections of Harrison Street from Fourth Street to Eighth have parking on both sides and that was one of the concerns that was cited from a lot of the respondents that there wasn't room for two-way traffic with the on-street parking. My counter to that normally is that it's good traffic calming measure to have on-street parking, so actually that can serve as a deterrent to having traffic want to use those streets. That does however start to break down a little bit when you have the entire block parked full. It's easy to say, you've got parking on one side or on both sides and you've got two oncoming cars, you can shift and wait behind a parked car for the other one to pass and that's quite effective as a traffic calming device. When you have a block like the 600 block of Harrison, for example, where there's very few driveways and parking dense on both sides, that does become a little bit of a challenge. So, those would be challenges we would have to overcome and look at, look at how best to address those. As Mr. Pastu said, there is a breakpoint near Fourth Street where we think we could actually make it work easily without having to do too much shifting around the on-street parking because of the width of the street. The question would have to be asked is, do we want to try this partway to Fourth Street and have that transition point or do we want to try to do this all at one time? Mr. Pastu alluded to the seasonal nature of this a little bit and I think that was partly what I had in mind too. I don't know if you want to make such a drastic change ahead of the winter plowing season, not knowing what the winter's going to look like, but that's, that'll be a council decision on that. Might be better to, better to look at that starting in the spring. I think that's, I think that's as far as we probably have time for, but that's what I have for now on that.
See if there's any questions or comments from council to start with. I'll just make a quick one from the Traffic Committee. Obviously, there was no action or no recommendations taken at that point. It was just about to get the surveys out and, but one thing that the committee did recognize and I think Patrick alluded to is, it's more than just Cass and Harrison. When you go down toward First and Front, there's those things that are in our discussion in the future. Seventh and Eighth, they're still one-way and should those be included? So, it was really, the committee looked at as, there's going to be a larger perspective on this, take the surveys, understand what it is, but start to get through the questions that Patrick has presented and also things that might be challenges that we need to have good responses for. I think taking a broader view of that might soften some of the responses or look at it in a broader sense, which I don't think that's some of the residents would have done with the surveys they received. That's where the communication plan comes, that discussion and interaction with the community, so. If there's other comments?
And I would like, would add, Your Honor, it certainly lacked the scientific validity of the survey you saw earlier this evening, so I don't pretend otherwise. I will say, jumping on the coattails of that survey, I got more responses, I think, in favor, not of the one-way conversion, the two-way conversion, but fix the fill-in-the-blank road.
Yeah.
On Harrison Street in particular. So, there was, there was quite a number of people that weighed in on the Harrison Street surveys about the, about the road conditions as well.
Yeah. Patrick got a few more comments than was anticipated.
Yes, I typically do with a slightly open-ended survey like that.
Yeah.
Your Honor, my, my thoughts are that you have to take a look at the, the whole broader spectrum of this. We commissioned an $80,000 master plan for the downtown, which include a transportation planning component, which indicated that we've got to make changes to the one-way system in the downtown if we want to have a vibrant downtown. I look at the responses we just got from the community survey and the community says we want a vibrant downtown, we want more shopping opportunities. The one-way system that we have on the south side of the river, and I know this for a fact because when I was a kid, I lived over on Smith, Smith Street, all of those streets used to be two-way. They went one-way primarily to facilitate traffic between the shopping center and downtown and then the east-west was to get people from Monroe Street out to Rossler where you had the Lazy Boy Factory and you had Consolidated West and you had Steel Castings and all three of those are now gone and we haven't changed the system back. I think, Patrick, you know as well as I do, probably even more so, that the most efficient transportation system in an urban area is a grid transportation system that facilitates two-way traffic.
Yes.
Because when you do one-way, you're channeling all the traffic in one direction. And I'm thinking people probably on those streets are concerned that their traffic is going to go up. I would think, based on what's in the literature, is that they're not going to see an increase in traffic. They may actually see a decrease because people are going to take alternative routes. So, I understand the question about when do we implement it, but I don't think there's ever a good time to implement one-way to two-way streets. I, I think we should seriously take a look at it sooner than later.
If you're going to do it sooner, we should probably do it relatively soon because there's going to be a number of new sign channels and things we're going to have to do. So, I would certainly, if that's the desire of council, we should probably jump on that in the next couple of meetings here so we have time to get the, get those changes in. I, again, that's a, that's a, that's a policy call that you all have to wrestle with, but I, we're, I would tend to agree with it. The block grid pattern and I think actually jumping off what you said too, if we leave the on-street parking the way it is, there will be choke points in this network on Cass and Harrison Street that will deter that through traffic that may be a concern of those residents. There may be some, there may be quite a bit of congestion that we induce, but I'm not sure that that's necessarily a bad thing if these are not intended to be through routes. I'll add that to the discussion as well.
That's all I have.
I was thinking of a Union Street between Seventh and Eighth. I believe that's a one-way also, is it not? Or is it a two-way?
No, that's a, that's a two-way street.
All right, I'm sorry. Okay, Ryan?
Just one other thing. I think the, most of the residents, from what I looked at from the responses, were concerned about parking more than anything else. The lack of parking due to the fact that we'd take one of the sides away from them from parking.
There seemed to be that presumption among many of the respondents, yes, that to do it, we'd have to take parking away from one side. That's correct.
It'd be really tough to try to make it two-way without taking one side away. So, the parking issue would be the, probably the biggest problem for them, I'm assuming, so.
I believe that's correct, although again, it's not terribly, not a scientific survey, but there were enough responses that related to parking that I have that impression.
Yeah, but even if you drive it long enough, you'll know that it is a concern. I drive up and down those streets and I can tell you it is a concern if you have no parking on one side. There's, you're right, there's no driveways in some of those homes.
Yeah, especially the farther south you get.
Hey, Your Honor. Oh, yeah. Kelly?
Patrick, you know, that was also an issue with the Conant Street residents and we went ahead and left parking on both sides of the street.
You did.
I know you have some wider spots towards the turns at Third and Conant, it's a little bit wider, but it is a little frustrating, but it works. You know, sometimes you do have to pull behind a parked car or let a larger vehicle come through, but we were concerned about the lack of driveways, but it seems to be working. How many feet is Conant Street?
We narrowed Conant to 20, I believe it was 28 from 36.
Yeah.
And we left parking on both sides, which is.
That was a lot of.
Yeah, that gives you a 12, that gives you a single 12-foot lane if cars are parked exactly across from each other. And that seldom happens where there's always a car exactly across from one. It'll, it'll probably happen more likely on Harrison Street than it would on Conant just because the density of the lots, especially on the east side, there's a lot of corner lots that are bigger on Conant. But no, we, actually, my office hasn't fielded, that I'm aware of a single complaint about leaving parking on both sides on Conant and that.
Yeah, I get all those. No, not about, not about, they're happy about the leaving the parking. I just get complaints about it is a little tight, but I think that we've heard developers say that our lack of east-west flow and our one-way streets are a hindrance, so I think the trade-off is definitely worth it, so.
No comments on the streets? If not, we have one more item, Vince?
If I may, just to bring this back, you know, we'll, we'll bring back a traffic control order. Patrick, Mr. Lewis and I will talk about what the reasonable implementation would be for putting in the necessary traffic control devices to acknowledge and certainly the communication aspect of it to the existing residents. So, we'll follow up. I'll probably have it back on the next meeting just to move it along, so.
I think the intersection there, First and Front will be probably the most challenging part, just for the flow of traffic and getting people through the intersections, but I'll look forward to that. Thank you.
We may want to leave that block between First and Front out for right now.
Wait and see what, we'll wait and see what you come up with.
So, last item, I, and we'll go through it fairly quickly, is obviously there was some gas main replacement that took place in the alley between South Monroe and Washington from First to Third and, you know, as part of the process that the contractors regarding, was responsible for restoration. Restoration of what? These alleys are really, really bad and I think, and again, going to our downtown area, it begs the question, why don't we just look at the total reconstruction of these alleys, you know, where you'd vision, maybe a concrete alleyway and engage in SAD, Special Assessment for the benefiting property owners. We've kind of bounced around, I understand historically with the spread, but I would think certainly 75% owner, 25% city is a pretty standard and not only that, but we probably would, at least in this segment here, get some money from the contractor related to the work to defray that. I think Patrick has estimated probably about $55,000 per block to do that in that ballpark. So, and all part of what I'm suggesting is, if we start looking at a Special Assessment District to do this, eventually you're going to have to anyways. It's certainly not, these are, you know, functional alleyways and certainly not attractive given their current condition. So, I throw that out for thought and comment.
Comments on the alleys? John?
Yeah, Your Honor, the downtown alleys, in addition to serving for loading and unloading, I know a lot of folks walk those alleys to get to work in between locations, so it's a, to me, it's also a safety issue in terms of the condition of them. So, I, yeah, they're, they're in bad shape. I mean, I look at the alley that you guys did between Front and First on, between Washington and Monroe Street by, behind McGady's and Martin Shoe. People are constantly walking through there, getting into the backs of the buildings because a lot of the folks opened up the backs of their buildings and they go over to the parking lot. It's worked out really well. So, oh, yeah, those are.
Yeah, they're really, like, patch.
And that's, that's where we were kind of at. When the gas company, you know, came back through there, we, they, there's, you know, it was a mess. I mean, obviously when they're using these alleys, it was a mess, but it's difficult and they didn't come through this section. There's two different alleys. There's a block between First and Second that they touched just a little bit. Second that they touched just a little bit at Second, and then there's one between Second and Third. So, this is a, this is a view between First and Second. And like the thrift store, they park here. There's their access. You've got a lot of elderly volunteers that are there. They're sometimes walking in the alley. You've got the Presbyterian Church that has their parking lot. I don't think I have a good shot of that, but, but their parking lot only comes off the alley. There's people walking across there. So, there's, there's a number of reasons why this, it makes sense to get, get on this. The, the one between Second and Third is the one we just have the difficulty with them patching in. Asphalt, it's an asphalt alley, and they cut the middle of it. Trying to waste, you know, you could waste $20,000 on hand patching for what purpose? And that's exactly what Mr. Pastu was saying. There's no real reason for that. So, doing this in our normal concrete V design where you can have the drainage channel in the middle, and that's what we're looking to do. It will take some time. We can't fast-track this this fall just because there, there has to be, we've got to make sure that the building shed into the middle and everything, but.
Your Honor, I've got a question that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question, and I'm gonna probably hear Ed moan in the audience there, but I'm, I'm wondering, because the, a lot of these alleys are also used for loading, unloading, and then waste collection.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is there an idea, or maybe can we take a look at, can we use the refu, part of the refuse millage to toss some of that money into the alley reconstruction? Because a lot of folks depend on those alleys for their waste removal.
That's going to point back at me a little bit, too.
Well, see, as he's contemplating, he's just smiling, as he's contemplating, I, I, that's one of the items I have on here is, you know, how do we, how are we really work toward the removal of the dumpsters in the alley? That's the big vision, and how, where do we find that space to be able to do that? And then, is, is that part to, John, what you're saying?
Right.
Well, with that, I, there's two other alleys, I think, that in future, future considerations as well. We've talked about one in the past, which is the alley between West Front and West First, and you actually can all go all the way down to West Third Street. I know the Heart of Monroe Project, we've talked about that, but people do walk and utilize the alleys there equally, and it's, that's as, I would say hazardous at times in some places. And the other one would be the alley between East Front and East First. Clearly, there's a significant, a company or a town that utilizes that back for access for their employees, their parking, but also walking from the downtown into the, the government plaza area is, is used frequently as well. So, while this is the one that's presented for us tonight, I, I, you know, long-term, I think all three of those are part of a comprehensive decision on our alleys in the downtown area, but that, that, that have the same need, and I think are in the same condition, and then the overall, again, as we talked about, is those, those dumpsters to remove. And I'm looking at Ed, he's still smiling at us, so.
I'm always smiling.
One other thought, Your Honor, and I, I'm, I'm asking this for educational purposes. We don't allow people on bikes to use the sidewalks downtown, but if the alleys were improved, could they use the alleys to get around the downtown on their bicycles?
Sure.
Patrick is saying yes.
I, I don't see why not.
I mean, there's vehicles that use that, people that walk.
And nodding his head affirmatively as well.
Okay.
And you could even let, you could even stripe them, but honestly, when you have vehicles and pedestrians and all that, there's opportunities to make it more visible.
Well, if you, you know, part of it is, if you, in the interest, we got to get into a closed session here quickly, but, um, I'll look, we'll look at the west side of South Monroe, that structure you were talking about from Front to Third. Mr. Lewis and I had that same conversation, and yes, I think, you know, it would be appropriate if we were going to do some sort of dumpster design, whether it's an enclosure, a pad, any acquisition that we may need to contemplate that. So, it is part of, I think, that design that we necessarily go with it. And Ted and I had some discussion this afternoon about financing, but if you don't mind, we'll probably bring you back initial resolution to initiate the Special Assessment Districts to, to take a look at it, potentially for the spring, so.
That'd be great. Another work session we have, I believe we have probably enough time for you or so.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, I'm sorry, here, what do you think about that? Is there's no other comments on the work session?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion.
Just to adjourn it?
Yeah.
Adjourn the City Council work session, and we'll...
Any possibility, Your Honor, of opening the regular meeting and then going into closed session immediately to talk about the issue and then coming back and handling all of the regular meetings?
Your Honor, I think you could do that. I mean, if we're going to do that, I would say just go into the special meeting, go as long as we need to go, and then that would just delay the start of the regular meeting. That's really a preference question. I think it could be done that way.
Then I'm looking at the clerk to make sure, because we have it posted, and, or obviously the time is around our other meetings.
What'd you call him, Michelle?
That would be fine. We, we would be fine. We just have to start the council meeting scheduled for 7:30, so we just can't start that before 7:30, so we're fine.
Okay, then I think we'll just wait until the regular council meeting. Is that what yours is? Or no?
I think the suggestion is, let's go into the special meeting, go into closed session, and if it runs a little bit over 7:30, then we'll start the regular meeting a little bit.
All right, call the City Council Special Meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Egwangeli?
Here.
Feining?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. So, we need a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we go into close the executive session to discuss pending litigation regarding
Because of the recent...
Regarding DTE.
Okay. Second, it's a motion, there's a motion by Councilwoman Egwangeli, supported by Councilman Lemoore, to go into close the executive session for the, our purpose stated, and clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Egwangeli?
Yes.
Feining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.